Welcome everybody at Ambassador Town Hall Meeting Number 40. Happy Spring everybody, we made it through winter, at least on this hemisphere. We've got a nice group today, let me find the list because it's a long list. So today we're joined by Roger Caboty, Byt Cardenial, Crandano, CryptoBeing, FlyFus, Head Elf, Ian, Judith Knitschi, Lily Cupcake, Mikasa, Robert Werker and Sugar and Spice. Thanks all for attending. I do remember now, I did not add the very first sheet of explaining a little bit about what the Ambassador Program is about in the first place. So I'll do it from top of mind. Just as a little recap, why we're here and also for the people watching this for the very first time. The Ambassador Program broadly speaking has the aim of spreading the word about SingularityNet and its ecosystem. And additionally providing a way of yeah facilitating a way that community members can also contribute to the ecosystem and yeah find like-minded people and have a good time. Let's dive right into the agenda. It's pretty much the structure we're always using, a little update on the workgroups, a little update on the tasks. Do want to touch a little bit on the structured discussion that's taking place and then some small mentions and open topics if anybody has them, we'll get to that as well. I did learn a lesson from last week, not dwelling too long on the Process Guild and Treasury Guild discussions. I can give a little recap. For the Process Guild, we basically did a pretty broad sweep across the outstanding tasks. We've got a huge MyRaboard with, yeah, it's collecting all the loose ends, let's say. And we had a nice session of getting some order in the chaos there. And right after this Town Hall, so at 19 UTC, we'll have another Process Guild meeting, continuing the work there. Then on the Treasury Meeting, we did have a session where we went through all the outstanding payments and figuring out again putting some order in the chaos, I guess. I think pretty much all the payments have been done and should be clear now. There's one very unlucky user who I think for the third time managed to fall through the
I think he got the payment today.
Ah, that's great to hear, thanks Roger. That's great to hear and that took its time, but it did get sorted eventually, that's good. And we now also linked the payments to the Treasury Updates Channel on here. So whenever something happens, you can, to the Treasury Wallet, you can see it immediately being reflected on the Discord Channel. And yeah, I think that covers as far as Treasury Guild goes. Then on the Marketing Guild, we shifted from having the Monday Evening Session to having a Strategy Session on Wednesday. So this week, the Monday Meeting didn't take place, but there were some meetings happening over the weekend. I personally was not able to join this, but perhaps Roger, you could talk a little bit about this? I think you hosted it, if I'm correct.
So the Video Work Group, yeah?
Yes, yep.
Yes, okay. So we had a Video Work Group in Sunday PM. So before having the meeting, I took some time to kind of write down a little bit of what I thought would be a nice kind of structure to have in the Work Group. And then we had a call, a couple of people joined. I know it's a Sunday, most people didn't join, I'm sorry, I had to choose Sunday. But and that was the day most people voted for, but yeah, anyway. So yeah, we had the meeting, we talked about the document, we had a couple of comments and I will actually drop down the document now and so that we have more comments, that is great. You can check on the document and then let me know, I mean just comment there what you don't like, what you like. Also, if you're interested in joining the Work Group, because a lot of people didn't join, if you're interested, please go to the Marketing Videos Channel and then drop down your portfolio. Portfolio meaning just a file on Google Drive that has a couple of stuff that you have put on before. We have a couple of portfolios that were posted already. We will look at them with a couple of people, including ambassadors from this group, including Peter, Fly and Crandano and others. We'll look at the portfolios and then try to get a minimal number of people just to bootstrap the Work Group. And then after two weeks, we will open up back to the community to see whether our efforts were worth it or not. Also, this is noteworthy, this group is a closed Work Group. So if you're not part of it, you will not be able to see what is being shared on the channel. But you will be able to see, of course, the final products and the final products will be voted by the general community to be posted or not. You just won't be able to see the little details and the brainstorming behind every product. But yeah, that's, I think about it.
Awesome, good stuff. And then let's see, what's the current status and I'm trying to remember the current status of the Writers Group, did that progress?
Yeah, you guys can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay, alright, we had the meeting on Saturday at I think 14 UTC. Quite a number of people joined, I guess even Rojo and Crandano were present. And we, if you actually scroll up, you might see the doc, we went over the Writers Work Group Structure Draft. And we ided it and everybody like felt like it was, at least everybody was good with it and we're moving along with that, moving on. There's also an Article Suggestion Doc, I think a few messages below it. That is the aggregation of tweets ideas for topics that we should write on and myself. And I, everyone is welcome to add into it. We decided to move forward like now to make a, everybody is going to be submitting an hundred-word article on a topic of their choice related to AI and SingularityNet, of course, and the entire ecosystem. And based on that, we'll select the whole community or at least the Writers Work Group will select which articles should be written before that you actually go into the writing phase. And we, so we're waiting towards the next meeting, still on Saturday, for everybody's submission and then we'll go over it on the call. And then we also went through the Twitter Plan, Strategy Forward, and we decided to use the content planner I made earlier. And we'll be looking to use that to collate all our Twitter threads and tweets and even articles that might be going out and put it on the calendar. And I brought up the link for the Cognitive Protocol Discussion, I think Peter you hosted that on Twitter, the Twitter space. And we, I made a suggestion that we should actually write an article on it, you know, to get the highlights of the meeting or the discussion. And if you can put that into a blog post, that would be cool, or a Twitter thread. And I think that's go from the meeting, so we're still looking forward to our next meeting and I will move further.
Great stuff, good to see that ball starting to roll, that's nice. Let's see, then just making sure, either I guess Crandano or FlyFus, are there any further updates from Marketing Side, from Marketing Guild Side, which I'm now skipping on perhaps?
We can just introduce how Marketing Guild does, yeah, me and Crandano's work is kind of related to the Writers Guild and the Video Guild popping up, which is great to see guys, so great. So on Fridays, Fridays will be, 13 UTC will be a place and a time where these different smaller guilds within marketing can meet and come together and discuss things, to work things out, develop cross-collaboration between the guilds. Yeah, and then the Incubation, which is very much like the grassroots strategy related to this 10,000th Strategy, is something that will kind of happen in the first hour of the two hours on Wednesday. So yeah, very, very excited to see how this new restructuring kind of feeds into getting people engaged and productive. Anything you want to add, Crandano?
Yeah, totally agree on Friday being a good spot for the two workgroups to kind of meet and update everybody on what's going on. Last Friday, besides the Writers Work Group and Video Work Group, we talked a little bit about Twitter. And we've now got a really solid group of people on the Twitter.
Sorry, tactical server muted there on Cryptowee. Thanks for joining and for the music, but I muted you for now. Seems he's left, okay.
Oh, and that's all I've got on my end.
Cool, thanks. Yeah, we'll touch a bit more on the Incubation and Structure topic after this. Yeah, then just a reminder that there is a calendar you can subscribe to and also a reminder to well, the previous couple of workgroups that got mentioned, for example, if the if there's gonna be on the coming Saturday on 14 UTC, if there's gonna be a meeting as well, that yeah, we should make sure to include that in the calendar. And just a quick question for the Video Group. Will that also have another Sunday Meeting coming up or is there like a next meeting scheduled for that? At Roger?
I was thinking of putting it in the middle of the week, but then like the middle of the week is just too, you know, the workweek is just too dense, we have so many meetings. So perhaps I should do it in Saturday, perhaps the same, same or one hour difference from the Writers Work Group so that people could, if people are involved in both or something, they can join both. But then I will have to ask people who are already involved. Yeah, probably around Saturday, that would be fine.
Yeah, that's true, as FlyFus comments on chat. A lot of people try to not work on the weekends, that's definitely a thing. At the same time, yeah, it does need to be some, at some point, at some day. I see this triggered a lot of more people in chat to comment on it, probably. There's parties, weekend days are bad days. No weekends at all.
Take your weekends and go.
No, I'm sure we can get that sorted. Just wanted to, yeah. Emphasize that once the next session is planned, that it should be in the calendar so everybody sees it popping up. Alright, I think that covers a quick overview of the workgroups for now. Let me flip the slide. Yeah, well, the quicker, there would be that for the last week, there have been no additional tasks added. I'm expecting quite some more after the Strategy Discussions evolve. And I still have to add the Rejuv Utility Block for translations. And yeah, as mentioned, the payments are done up till now. Does anybody have any further requests on, or ideas on tasks to be added for short term? Just a quick check.
Just on the meetings, perhaps it could be that Marketing Videos and the Writers Guild kind of pick-ish the same slot, so even if it was on the weekends, then it can be kind of optimized and we can like choose, we can set aside a block of a few hours rather than having to split time up across days. Yeah, just a thought guys, up to you.
Yeah, it seems like a good idea, like, you know, last Friday, I'd say most of the meeting, we were kind of talking about the Writers Work Group, which is cool, the Friday Meetings can kind of be a good spot to hash these things out. And really, for instance, like this Friday, maybe we touch on marketing topics, maybe it lasts for 30 minutes or so, then it could break out into different workgroups, but at the same time, maybe having them at the same time, there might be people that want to do writing and video, so I'm not quite sure best way to do that, but maybe you guys could have the meeting like right after marketing or anything like that too, just as an idea.
That's nice, almost like breakout.
Yeah, from top of head, I'm not entirely sure if there's much overlap between the workgroups. I mean, there's, there's interaction between the two, I guess. That's the writing of video scripts, for example, if you're working on that in the Writers Group and at the same time, there's a Video Work Group going on, that's not optimal. Well, I think, yeah, I'm pretty confident we'll get it.
Can you too, what do you think? Or we don't need to do this now?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm not, I was also thinking about the, you know, the times and all, but I don't, I'm not so sure yet, I'm not so sure yet, to be honest, but I feel like it's something we should definitely settle. So I don't know. I feel maybe it would be more logical to have the workgroups actually, that is, writers and videos meet on the same day. But then it's, I don't know, probably, I don't know, like, we actually have to like find, I think the best way to do that will probably have to shift the hours up a bit, it would be like, if you're looking at, I don't think we have any meetings, we all start like one, you just, like, I think UTC or like or the likes, so if possible, we can shift it somewhere there, but I don't know, it's gonna be strenuous work to figure it out, I guess.
Yeah, in my mind, it makes sense to have them right after each other, so people interested in both can have a block and that's, that's yeah, whether it's on the weekend or not, that's a separate question. I think based on chat responses, it looks like weekend might not be optimal. Alright.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes?
Yeah, man.
It's Beijing, I'm in China, it's 2 AM right now. Very interested in this program, so I stay quite late. Many friends around me are quite interested in projects, but they will always compare to OpenAI because, you know, OpenAI and Microsoft, they are like giants. And what we offer, what we, what kind of trust we have? Singularity and this is something
I'm catching it, you're asking about the difference between OpenAI and SingularityNet?
Yeah, yeah, difference. Many, because you know, we can, OpenAI or Microsoft, you know, are like kind of giants. And we can, you know, many friends around me with a taste, with a test of OpenAI in in Bean or in the website and so many friends that don't, we want to know the difference and maybe as a master, I will, you know, advocate Singularity and to tell them what we have, yeah.
Yeah, fair, I can, I can see this being either a little bit off-topic for now and better reserved for at the end of the call. Or if there's a tie-in to like making content focused on explaining those differences, I can see it being on topic. But I think you're asking a bit broader question in general, is that correct?
Yeah, yes. It's my first time joining the meeting and you know, sorry for that.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, man, welcome brother.
But I do need to keep a little bit track of the agenda, no, it's completely fine talking about these things, but I would suggest to, yeah, keep it at the end of the agenda, so we at least have all the topics covered we're aiming to cover.
We can write in the chat, we can link you up with something if you write in the chat.
That also works, yeah. So yeah, great question, but for now, I'm parking it a little. And then after the official agendas, then we can defer as we wish, of course.
Okay, thanks Pete.
Alright, that brings us to the very messy slides about the discussion about the program structure. We had a very nice session last week on Wednesday. I think I thanked both FlyFus and Head Elf multiple times by now, but I would like to do so once more. I guess, well, maybe, maybe Head Elf, could I give you the words on yeah, giving a little bit of a overview of what we discussed? Not trying to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay, I like being put on the spot. We had, I think, two great back-to-back meetings. We had, I call it the ground level and then we saw it up to the 10,000-foot view about what's going on in the program. Crandano, I think, will be better to speak about the first hour of the meeting on the ground level. But at the 10,000, since I'm on the spot, the 10,000-foot view, the first thing we did is we reviewed the budget, which is in the Strategy Guild Channel. And we looked at the roles and we came down to, I think it's six roles. And we looked at the guilds and we came down to five guilds. We hashed out definitions and functionalities of the different roles, so we came to a consensus. I have updated the budget and I put that, and that by the way, if you hear the background, is my oldest grandson Angus, who's about to get a hot dog and he's very excited, so I apologize for the background noise. But we shaped up the roles of the different Ambassador Cadre and of the different guilds, and that is in the updated budget. We stayed on target, we didn't stray, we didn't get into the budget numbers or things like that. So it was a very good, I think, structured meeting where we accomplished a lot because we agreed and came to consensus. So please look for this Wednesday, the 10,000-foot, we're gonna take up the budget where we left off. We're gonna do a quick review on the roles and the guilds. But I also, Ian posted a couple of weeks ago, a overview of a couple of other Ambassador Programs. And I linked that also in the Strategy Guild and thank you Ian for that, I greatly appreciate it. And if everybody could read that, it does a kind of a deep dive on, I think it's three different programs. Or four, to give us, I don't want to say an ancestral relationship with other Ambassador Programs, but certainly borrowing things that work and mimicking is, can be a good thing, can be a bad thing. But our goal, as we've stated, is to create the best Ambassador Program in this decentralized Web3 world. Somewhere along the lines, we said something like that, and if we didn't, I'm saying that now. So join us Wednesday, the second hour, and I believe it's 18:00 and 19:00 UTC. But I'll let Crandano, since he was the MC, did a fantastic job in bringing everything together on this restructuring. And then really the need to pull back. And I know, I'm an old guy, I'm an old fart, and I slowed down after my 30s. And I kind of think about things before I do stuff now, that was a big change. And my 30s were 30 years ago. But Crandano makes a very good point. If we rush in, and I know a lot of young guys and women want to do that, just do, just do, get it done because Nike said that, just do it, right? But if we do that, we're not doing it with quality. And without quality, we will not create the best Ambassador Program. So Crandano did a great job in pulling us back, examining where we are, and that's what we need to do even more, get the processes in place. And that's the end of my spiel, thank you.
Beautiful. Yeah, in Strategy, last Wednesday, I discussed an idea to have an incubation group as a sort of middle ground for a community member wishing to become an ambassador to increase our organization. We would have some form of filter such as a quiz or expectations before a person could join the incubation group. Also suggested we should have confirmed ambassadors within the program that know their role within the program as well as their time and reward allotment. There's slides and Head Elf's document that we went through within Strategy, as well as Ian's overview on other Ambassador Programs. So please check those out and join us tomorrow at 19 UTC. And if anybody has any questions or anything like that right now, feel free.
Thanks a lot for that, both of you. Yeah, I do want to point out that as Head Elf mentioned on mimicking, copying, I think the main focus should be avoiding to having to reinvent the wheel because others have done so already. So we can simply learn their lessons as well. If anybody else wants to contribute to the topic, feel free. Alright, then for now, yeah, just the invite to join us tomorrow. Looking forward.
Yeah, Peter, I'd like to add one more thing and that's the meeting after this, last week, TiVo and his Whiteboard. Really holding our feet to the fire, so to speak. The structure that's coming out of that Whiteboard Meeting is phenomenal and I think many should join that so we know what's going on.
Yeah, 100% agreed, it was actually Yeah, hundred percent agreed. Um, it was actually uh funny, was discussing this uh in real life. I had the pleasure of um meeting Flyer Fools um Saturday and um besides having a lot of fun, we also, well, you talk about the things you love, of course, so um. Yeah, the the it also um highlighted to me that um the initial stages of the process guild. We covered a lot of things. Um, TiVo is very um structural and procedural in in really mapping out all the aspects of what we started with was the translation process. Um, but that also, there's a lot of knowledge which can simply be transferred back um onto other tasks, uh generally speaking. And yeah, I do think there's there's still a lot of to be, a lot to be well, used from that uh previous work. For example, something to uh um which is in there is like the the keeping track of, like if if you're um onboarding somebody, uh translator, like to keep track on D work of the time you spent in all the steps in that process. So in the end, you don't end up um having no clue what what you did. And also, it's it's very simple if you have, if you are keeping track, to then tie it to rewards later on.
When you mentioned the like very early starting to track and like map out what you do, my first uh action was, hmm, what did we discuss in the first process guild meeting? And the first task was design an ambassador program. So I guess we just started it for now, one year later.
Yeah, plus in the year.
That is so great.
But yeah, I think we can learn a lot. Actually, today I worked on the open app framework session, which was one of the funded capitalist proposals. And I've been using that research and bringing that and showing it to Peter, and he was like, yeah, sure, why not? Let's try some motherboard processing and fix it up on T work and see if it works. So tomorrow I will be also sharing a video about that, and I can post it also in the um process guild channel, so that, and then I will, I demonstrate the the usage and learn lessons learned using and mapping out the process. But it covers a bit more like, like a higher level, out of the box level, what tools we even are using, why we are using them, and how it shapes our culture. Um, because if we would be using Zoom for town halls, it would be totally different culture, but because it's Discord, it's now provides like um different aspects of that. And then using the D work or mapping out processes on motherboard, all of this kind of shape the way we work with each other. Um, so it's just a little highlight of what's coming and yeah, I think the way I like it, like the way here is that we can try like research first and data first approaches. And I think, and I feel like with these groups is much easier, because people who find ambassador program usually find it through SingularityNet, and they find SingularityNet because they have some hmm intuition about AI, like how it's used and and how could it be used? And then if they le- learn these AI features, they kind of learn that they need clean data and in order to m- maximize efficiency and leverage the AI to help us, we need to have better processes to capture the information we are doing. And so that AI could assist us at some point in future managed projects, we just say, well, we need translators, we have a lot of blockers, what should we do? And if an assistant just drops us the options and we just model it together, yeah, I think with, this is the way it would work for us. It would be such amazing. But unfortunately, right now, we have to pave the way to that future.
Small steps, one motherboard at a time. All right, um. Yeah, I think it's uh time to hop to the next slide for now. Uh, we can come back to the topic if if we want. I just wanted to uh do two small um two small mentions. Um, so right now, actually, the voting for uh deep funding round two is open, and also the voting for the allocation of the loyalty rewards pool for the SingularityNet uh phase two tokens. Um, so yeah, if you're interested in letting your voice be heard, um, do vote. Pretty straightforward uh mission there. Um, it's, let me put the link in the event chat. It's voting.deafunding.ai. And yeah, that's the voting portal for both of these um voting events. Pretty curious how it will turn out. Um, I do have to put a side note that we're unfortunately still not able to um account for AGIX tokens on Cardano if the user has a ledger wallet involved. Um, so yeah, that's um a bit of a bummer. Um, basically, we tried to have a work, I I think I did talk about this before. Um, the issue is that there's an um a signature required, which um basically didn't work out with ledger wallets. Um, all the fix or workaround for that is to require an actual transaction of, let's say, one um ADA. And we couldn't get that uh tested and implemented uh before, well, without needing to postpone the the voting even further. Uh, so it was decided to have, well, to 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 have to vote and yeah, right now, not unfortunately, not being able to support ledger wallets on Cardano. However, if you have a non-ledger wallet, uh web wallet, um, those do work and are supported. So yeah, that's in itself um a step forward compared to the previous round, where we were only using Ethereum. Um, yeah, and then actually what you touched on, uh TiVo, um using Discord creates a setting, but there were also quite some uh was a little bit of discussion ongoing right before this call started, and it's been brought up uh multiple times. Um, whether or not we should uh switch to using Zoom. Um, there's a limitation, for example, on the amount of um people that can be in a call, um while Discord still supports video. And I think it would be a a good idea to um well, at least try it for a while, uh to to switch to Zoom. And yeah, then the suggestion would be to to get an account for that um by the ambassador program itself. So it's uh the cost for that would be taken from the budget. I see some positive reactions. Um, let's flip it around. Would there be any objections on spending budget on getting a Zoom account? And to be completely frank, I do not know from top of mind what the exact costs are. Um, so it's a bit of a weird question to pose it like this. Um, would anybody have this number in top of mind?
If if I recall, when I got my Cardano for seniors, it's like a hundred dollars or something like that for the year. But I don't remember the, it wa- it wasn't an onerous number, Peter. But I noticed today that we're at twenty-two participants, and I think you're close to the max um using Discord. Um, you know, so as I said, if you want, I'll get it and pay me later and we'll take care of that. But I think it's it's, I think it's a good idea to get Zoom, so we we have that capability as the program grows.
Yeah, fully agreed. Um, yeah, right now, yeah, the limit is twenty-five. Uh, and we've had situations where people tried to join and couldn't join because I had my camera on. Um, I don't know, best case scenario, in my mind, everybody would have the cameras. And there would be more than twenty-five people. So, yeah, also recording um ah, recording quality might be that lower on Zoom. Uh, because right now I record using just OBS and uh on desktop, so it's it's a little bit higher quality, perhaps, but um I think it should still be very doable, quality-wise. I think I see only people either not saying much or saying it's a good idea, so.
Sounds good.
We can consider that decided then.
One fact, uh today I will the whole process guild in the Discord because we have a bit mismanagement of our invoices, so our Zoom account lost the pro version, and it's it it will kick out after forty minutes. So just to avoid that trouble, you know, to the to take the calling process.
Um, my school provides like a premium version, I could host it this time.
Or we do that.
Yeah.
No, that in itself is fine, but I mean, would be best, I guess, to have just uh to have it properly sorted. Um, I see Ian commenting uh that he's working on it. Uh, just for confirmation, Ian, you mean arranging an account for the ambassador program? Question mark. Correct, yes, cool. Awesome. Um, yeah, perfect, then. Uh, most likely next week, uh I imagine, um, we'll host this meeting on on Zoom. And then we can indeed do the stuff like was suggested uh before the meeting started, like pinning it and and everybody will know where to go, always. So that's uh great stuff. All right, um, that covers the couple of things I wanted to mention, and that brings us to the open round. Um, just a quick check if there's any topics we should touch on, any questions there might be, any ideas we definitely need to consider.
I have a thought on this, um, on Crandano's idea of kind of like holding our horses and slowing down right now, and just uh just wanted to like open source that question to the community in mind. Um, that resonates with me quite a lot, and I think a few others uh have. I I'd be very interested to hear your thoughts on what that means, uh practically, and how you guys imagine it.
Well, since no one else is piping in, um, my thoughts on slowing down uh are as follows. I think um quality to me is number one. Best practices are number two. Systems are number three. And human managing capabilities would be next. I don't think at this point, and I've heard previously that there's an email list or a list of three hundred people a while ago that said they wanted to be in the Snet Ambassador Guild. Now, A, no one ever, or the trigger was never pulled, because there was no system to handle that. And currently, as I can see, there's no system to handle that if we decide to go after those three hundred people. So I look at it always as a sales funnel. And the funnel is um, you know, from the top down, it's wide at the top, and you've have all these people come in, and at the bottom, you want them coming out with quality. So if we were to open the floodgates right now and try to attract three hundred or four hundred or two hundred people into the ambassador program, right now, we don't even have a place to host them. We don't have the Zoom account, and that's just a minor thing because we're talking about it. Uh, we don't have the infrastructure or the roles defined in order to handle them. And um, one of my favorite movies, uh uh Clint Eastwood says, well, this is general, this is a total clusterfuck. Let's not get to that point. Let's back up. We're defining roles. Um, we have some great people in here that are stepping up and taking leadership roles. Let's acknowledge that. And let's uh support them. And we have a restructuring um incubation, as as Fly calls it. And we also have, I think, the great filter came out. Um, but in a sales funnel, you have to be able to, when you start marketing and attracting people to human resources, you need to be able to handle them and have them go someplace, and we're not ready for that. So the backup to me is let's get everything lined up, let's get our roles agreed, let's get the budget percentages agreed. Let's get the guilds and who's going to support them all in place. And then we can start marketing the hell out of it and bring people into a program that we can all be proud of, a quality program. But we're not there right now, and everybody, I think, knows it. One way or the other, we know. Instinctively or or just, like Sukran, uh Sugar, when you you you're doing a phenomenal job on on attracting people and you have people wanting to know, go, where do they go next? And you don't have a place to tell them where to go. Um, so how do you handle that, Sugar? Why, you know, you you should pipe up a little bit, because you're the person I see more than anybody on the front line of welcoming uh the people that are reaching out. So what do you think?
Um, Sugar, I can see you unmuted, but from my side, at least there's no audio coming through.
And I apologize if I put you on the spot, Sugar, but I'm not hearing audio from her either. I see her microphone is on now. So I had suggested that we have a once-a-month meeting after people, and this is just to kick the can down the road. Um, after people do the first task, and then once uh Rojo or whomever uh does the uh D work video, which should be task number two, because everybody should know how they're gonna get paid. Um, then we do a monthly ambassador meeting, and and that's a punt, it's just a punt. But anybody that applies has to go to this ambassador meeting, and we can get a P O L, um, a proof of life life. Once we have Zoom, we can see that they're real, we can talk to them. And that's the step three. I don't know what step four is yet, and that's why we we need to pull this back a little bit. And it gives us a month to get step four and five. So to answer uh Fly, um, that's what I consider pulling back at this point.
Nice, that's really nice. Something I think of when you when you were talking is also this um coming to community-wide consensus, I guess. Um, there have been such great ideas coming through the community recently. And I think uh hammering, hammering out the the mode in which we as a community come to that consensus to uh initiate these proposals and to also review it. I think that one thing I think of is um creating these feedback loops, where we kind of feedback information and improve the system as we as we go. Making those uh feedback loops quite tight and integrated um with this consensus mechanism. I think uh could be great. But yeah, and that's great thought, Shadow. Nice, totally agree.
Careful what it's worth, uh also agreed on my side. Um, the 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 stepping back in a way is um, for me, it's also in a way, it's it's also connected to these um something for me which felt um initially at the beginning of uh last week's session that we were going a bit too quick on was uh like wanting to lock in the full percentages of the budget. Um, I would really want to argue for for keeping at least a a percentage that without putting a number to it, but like have some open um allocation for the the next great idea, which will pop up, uh which we cannot foresee, and then might not have budget if we like put it to a hundred percent. Um, but also fully agreed on the uh monthly onboarding. Um, but also fully agreed on the, uh, monthly onboarding session and, and once that filter is in place. I think there's still, should be room for tasks which are not necessarily, which wouldn't put you at a like, oh, I am an ambassador, I now represent the Singularity Net. Uh, but, but which would still be productive and, and could be like a bit of a entry level, let's say, uh, task, just, um, can be pretty open-ended perhaps. Um, in, in some random discussions, uh, something that, that fitted to this would be, um, doing background research on, on tooling and other DAOs and other, um, ecosystems. So that, that's by definition pretty open-ended. And I think we could potentially come up with a whole bunch of, of open-ended, low level, low entry level, um, tasks. I'm not saying we should, but, uh, just, that's just what, uh, comes to mind now. I see some discussion ongoing for the, also in light of onboarding, um. Seems like that also will be touched on, uh, tomorrow during the session. That's gonna be a nice session, um. Let's just, uh, just putting the question, are there anybody else wants to contribute right now to the topic or another topic?
I would join late today, but if it wasn't mentioned, then, uh, I created a task for veteran translators, so it's another upgrade method to check out in the D-work and if you have done translation task before and you would like to take it to the next level by now managing your task on D-work, moving it to the actual forum where people do read it. Then that's an option to kind of learn and it will also introduce the way currently translators are on-boarded. So basically, what I'm doing is just scraping out the initial starters who can initiate that, that translators group. And once you're veteran translators, you will be a bit of charge of onboarding new ones and actually evolving that group even further.
Yeah, great stuff. Uh, thanks for calling that out. Uh, I think you shared the link in the main channel earlier. Oh, not the event chat, but the ambassador chat, I guess.
I asked feedback and I got pretty good feedback, so I can share it now in the, I don't actually even know where. Yeah, I guess marketing could, I figure out, I will drop this in the ambassador events.
Awesome. Alright, um. I think that pretty much wraps the session for now, uh, we're two and a half minutes before time, uh. Seems good to me. Final check, anybody, anything?
Yeah, I, I, I did a file, a pre, application for the Ambassador Program and, uh, last week and I still got, no reply, so just wait, right? Wait for maybe next week when the, when the, when we would have the strategy meeting, maybe we will have some onboarding process for the new ambassadors.
Um, yeah, true. At the same time, you already found your way to this meeting. And that's a pretty important step, uh, following after the, um, signing up on the, on the form. And, um, and the Getting Started channel?
You're onboarding yourself at the moment. And that is how it's currently done.
Well, in my mind, uh, Getting Started, uh, thread, um, should be the place to find all info. Um, I can see it being outdated currently as it still mentions the process. Oh no, it's actually, it is updated, I think. It links to the MyRabot, it links to the web page, the D-work, the Gitbook. Provides some info on Singularity Net ecosystem.
I will say, uh, CryptoVision, if you would like to, if there is more information that you would like, uh, that we could improve the program or like, uh, like Getting Started last time, definitely.
Yeah, yes, I do want to explore, explore more. And, um, many friends, uh, around me, they want to know more, you know, about the Singularity project. And, uh, maybe I can be the bridge.
Welcome, brother.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, it sounds awesome. Did you see that there's a, we have an ambassador calendar in the Getting Started part? There's a couple of different workgroups. So if anything interests you, um, like we'll be doing strategy tomorrow.
Sure, I, I want to promote and, uh, you know, actually contribute more and, uh, and, uh, see what, what is interesting to me, not, actually, right now at this point, I'm interested in everything.
That's awesome.
Yeah, good stuff and, and welcome.
Thanks.
Alright, um, I think I'll await Haley typing in chat. Nice to see you on here. You should be, uh, having holiday and you got a half, yeah, fair, yeah, we should. Thanks for joining in. Um, so yeah, thanks everybody for, uh, for attending. Hope to see you, uh, either in the Process Guilds right after this call and I'm pretty confident the Zoom link, would there be a Zoom link?
No.
Sorry, um, Peter, can I hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, there was one last announcement from the Writers' Workgroup. We, um, hmm, because, um, due to, you know, speedballing and sharing a lot of ideas on the call, um, as well as, um, doing our cohorts and editorial process, we probably have to, um, or like to have it recorded. So we were thinking of using QuickBot to at least, um, have our ideas recorded while on the Discord meeting. So I wanted to ask if you could like, um, probably, um, invite the bot and actually know how to set it up or, you know, I don't have the admin rights. So if you could actually set that up, that would be awesome. So we can use QuickBot for the Writers' Work. But I think the Video Group, uh, said something about it too, because I joined the meeting or something, but I can't remember. But, um, we discussed it on our call on Saturday and we felt like it'd be a good idea to have the bot.
Uh, sure, I don't mind. I would like to check it first and I didn't recognize the name, so if, if you could DM me, then, uh, I'll check it and, uh, and add it.
Alright, thank you very much.
Good stuff, um, as TiVo mentioned, uh, Process Guild, uh, will continue right here in this channel, um. So yeah, uh, just formally, I'll, I'll stop the recording, uh, right now. Thanks everybody for joining today. And hope you stay around or otherwise perhaps join the Strategy Session tomorrow. Well, thanks.